Great, you are going to. I think you most likely will, I just can't say for sure. If I call it's like this area, I got dogged down. I just hope it doesn't come.
That's our.
Right, right, said trying to get a congo line in hallway.
And we guess we could just say one politician.
You saw me wet? Oh. Yeah, another one. Yeah, my daughter's IHSS time was cut like in half.
Oh, man.
So we're working with her to try and cut expenses.
Okay, it's about that time. Good morning. Welcome to the July 28 Board of Supervisors meeting. Would you please stand with me as we salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence? Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Nice to see everybody here on a beautiful summer day. Our first item of business is public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board on an item that is not on today's agenda but under the board's preview, please step forward, state your name and record for the address, and we'll limit this to 15 minutes. And seeing nobody standing except Mr. Merewald, we'll close the public comment time and bring this back to the Board of Supervisors matters. Supervisor Ennis, do you have anything for us today?
Yes, yes, on Thursday I will be going to the Animal Control in Porterville where we have a Step Up Gang Grant in process. We've got some young people out there that are learning how to take care of the animals and I think getting a good education as well as hopefully sending these kids in the right direction because you know, a lot of times when you work with animals, it tends to calm people, it tends to bring out the best in you. So looking forward to go over there and seeing those kids on Thursday and seeing how they're progressing with their Gang Grant. That's it.
Great, Supervisor Ashida.
Nothing today.
You're kidding.
I can't talk. Red.
Supervisor Worthley.
Met yesterday with an organizing group, they're going to be having a Step Up Program, a second one, in Cutler Rossi on September 3rd. The focus is going to be on adults and parents. And the Weed and Seed Program, which is very active in Cutler Rossi, is in the process of doing a very nice mural right now. It's been ongoing in the heat and I hope to get by there this evening and see the progress that's being made. I'll be in Sacramento this Thursday evening, Friday morning for a Commission State Mandates meeting and hopefully things will be quiet in Sacramento. That's it.
I saw pictures of that mural, it covers the side of a building, maybe 100 feet long, it's huge. Great, it looks good, the youth are doing a wonderful job. Supervisor Vanderpool.
And on the Step Up Service Youth Learning Grants, I'm going to be going to Tulare later on today to go see the group of young people in my area working on children's books at Tech Prep High School. So that's a very positive thing and it's good to see at-risk youth doing some very positive things for the community. And then also, just wanted to say that I made two presentations regarding the rail last week and that was very, they were very positive presentations, got a few questions at the City Council Meeting in Tulare and then also at the Planning Commission Meeting in Tulare. So it was a very positive experience and Tom Sparks, wherever you are, I'd like to thank you for all of your efforts and for helping to answer questions as well. So that's what I had.
Thank you. A week and a half ago, I attended a event with the Los Sierra Military Academy who also received a Step Up Service Learning Grant. Those young folks rebuilt computers from a pile of computers that did not work and put at least 15 computers together that I saw going to an adoptions program and also to foster parents with foster children who could not afford computers. So the Step Up Service Learning Grants are doing a wonderful job touching the lives, I think, of many teenagers. The other thing I will announce, I was hoping to see Under Sheriff Cleeck here, but we were just notified this morning, we received a phone call from Vice President Joe Biden's office in Washington DC notifying the sheriff that they received a COPS funding grant that would fund 12 officers for this year and that money comes from the Recovery Act. And there he is as I finished making his announcement for him. And I don't even think you're aware of this, Under Sheriff Cleeck, you received a lot of money from the Recovery Act COPS program this morning. Are you here to make an announcement? I see you have.
They do happen to have a little information.
Okay, well, we'll invite you up to finish it off then. I'll turn the rest of my time of Supervisor Matters over to Under Sheriff Cleeck.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It is indeed, you know, many days are not always happy and you can't always say good morning, but today's a great morning particularly for Tulare County and the citizens and particularly for the Tulare County Sheriff's Department. You know, opportunity comes every so often and we had an opportunity because of the recovery monies that were provided by the federal government for these funds and we put in for 12 officers a few months ago. And in the course of our staff and their diligence, many, many people working together collectively, collaboratively, particularly with our board, with the CAO's office and the relationships that we have, I think we're very fortunate and we have been given $3.179 million dollars. And this is going to be a tremendous strengthening of our law enforcement opportunities here in Tulare County. So I know the sheriff is extremely happy, he's been asking about this on a daily basis, wondering at, you know, what point in time we were going to hear something. And so I know that he's very proud of the people that work in our organization to put this funding or the grant together. So we do want to recognize everyone in this behalf of them.
Wonderful news. When I called over this morning, there was a congo line dancing down the hallways in the sheriff's department.
It's still going on. Probably have time after board to come on over.
Tell them to get back to work then.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This question, is this specified for a particular purpose or is it at the discretion of the department as far as these funds?
Well, it's going to go hand in hand with our community-based policing. We particularly located or looked at our county, how we could best strengthen the 35 unincorporated communities that we serve. And the sheriff and as the board have supported over the years, you know, we've been on again, off again with funding and trying to keep our officers in some of these communities. And so we're going to have 12 communities, they're going to have their very own police officers providing services and being a, you know, more than a police officer. These officers really are helping them with health and human services, RMA matters, just so many things that they can reach into and help the community and point them in the right direction. So that's what community-based policing is about, really being an interactive part of that area.
Thank you.
Wonderful news.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Under Sheriff, when do you expect that we are going to see these officers in these communities since you've received the grant?
Well, I tell you, you know, there is a process and obviously as we have the paperwork and all those things go into place and then, you know, at one time we did have struggles, you know, searching and finding people to work, I don't think that is the case. You know, unfortunately, our sister counties, many of them are struggling very hard. Sacramento had 255 deputies laid off. There are some surrounding counties that are going to be challenged with that. And so the field of opportunity is very ripe right now. But besides that in itself, you know, we have been doing a lot of work, doing business differently. We've been reaching out and trying to find those candidates that have just graduated from the police academy, we solicited them to come aboard and be reserve officers and giving them an opportunity. And, you know, we have a lot of great people right here in Tulare County, they're homegrown and this is where their families are, their roots are, this is where they want to be. So we're, you know, we're going to look at all of those individuals to provide them with an opportunity to live their dreams.
Great news, great news. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Just come back any Tuesday.
I'm not kidding, tell them to go back to work. Okay, we will now move to our consent calendar. We do need to pull item number 26 for separate consideration. Our addendum, consent calendar item one, we will pull for some minor clarifications. So are there any other items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar for separate consideration, board? Anybody from the public desiring to pull an item from consent calendar? Let's entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Vanderpool, second by Worthley. We'll first take up item number 26.
Passed unanimously.
It did pass unanimously, thank you. Pick up item number 26.
Mr. Chair, I would like to pull item number 26 because that's dealing with the right-of-way acquisition on the Road 108 widening project. That specifically deals with an owner by the name of Carrie Vanderpool. Carrie Vanderpool is an aunt of mine by marriage and she's actually no longer married to my uncle, but so, but she does have the Vanderpool last name and for that reason I wanted to pull this item and indicate that I have no financial interest in this property and this is a relative of mine, but that does not affect the decision that is being made today.
And it involves $500, I move approval, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Moved by Worthley, second by Ennis with way too much information. Approves unanimously. The addendum item number one has been pulled for some minor clarification. Mr. Huntley.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. You'll be acting on a couple of MOUs today that include a recommendation for a furlough. In the case of the physicians, we did not negotiate a furlough because they actually bring in revenue from Medi-Cal when they work. Instead, we secured their agreement to an actual pay reduction. We inadvertently left out some language in this agenda item that would maintain their same retirement contribution as if their pay were not reduced. That is an element of all the other agreements where there are furloughs. And so the language was in the furlough language rather than in the main agenda item and since we didn't do furloughs, we overlooked it. So we're asking you to approve it with the understanding that the pay reduction will occur, but they will be held harmless for their retirement contribution, both from them individually and from the county. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, let's entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Moved by Vanderpool, second by Ennis. Unanimous.
Thank you.
You don't go too far, Mr. Huntley. The next item we will take up is our first untimed item, which is an information item only. There was a bid opening and you can see the, by the agenda, the number of bids that were received, a large number of bids. Are you working your way this way, Mr. Summers, to make a brief comment about this?
Morning, Brian Summers, Senior Capital Projects Coordinator. And we did have a large number of bids on this, 15 to be exact. We were very pleasantly surprised. This was for the first phase of the Mooney Grove Park Bike and Trail Project and this will be installing the bridge, one section of the old Thule Historic Bridge that will connect the existing museum grounds to the new museum under construction. So we were very pleasantly surprised, not only did we get a large amount of bids, we also came in underneath our engineer's estimate. Staff has done due diligence, everything checked out for the apparent low bidder and we'll be bringing an item back to your board at the August 11th meeting to request that you award the project.
Great, and paint will be dry before August or before October 15th?
That is the plan.
Wonderful.
Very good.
Any questions? Thank you, that was an information item only. Okay, we'll now move to our addendum item number two. Mr. Huntley.
Good morning again. Back in May, the county administrative officer put together a proposed budget that anticipated the need to secure savings in the area of compensation from our county employees. And we commenced a negotiation process with a variety of bargaining units. And on June 16th of this year, Mr. Rousseau met with all of the representatives of the various unions and associations to describe the plan that he was proposing for us to bargain about as it relates to employee compensation and benefits. There were also three meetings on that date in which all of the county's approximately 500 unrepresented employees were invited and they had an opportunity to hear from Mr. Rousseau the specifics of his proposal. What we are presenting to you today is a recommendation to implement those items which were discussed back in June. Essentially, there are four elements to this proposal. One is to suspend merit or step increases and flexibly allocated position promotions. And without going into a lot of detail, flexibly allocated promotions are a series of promotions that don't go through the normal testing process, but rather based with time and grade. And they look very much like a step increase, but they're actually a change in title. So the proposal is to suspend all step increases and flexibly allocated promotions for the year. Obviously, we don't have a contract with the unrepresented employees, so these items are essentially open-ended. The second item was to suspend the matching grant or the matching funding for the deferred compensation program for our unrepresented employees. Presently, that program provides $1 for every $4 that the employee puts forward for deferred, into deferred comp, up to a maximum of $1,500. That program is proposed for suspension. The county has had a leave reimbursement program for employees who don't use any of their sick leave. It's a program that's been around for a number of years and that program would normally call for paying the employees and reducing their sick leave balance in December based on what they did between October of the prior year and October of the current year. That program is proposed to be suspended as well. And the fourth item was a furlough. And the proposal there is a 40-hour furlough over the course of the year, which has the impact of essentially reducing compensation a little, by a little bit, under 2%. And as I spoke a moment ago regarding the doctors, all of the benefits associated with compensation would remain unchanged, just the actual pay, the gross pay, would be affected by the reduction from the furlough. I think it's probably important to note that in our discussions with various employee bargaining units, they were very curious as to what was going to happen to management, how management was going to be treated in this instance. We were very forthcoming to them and told them that everyone was going to, quite frankly, have to share the pain. And so by bringing this item to you first, really, on the list, this is an opportunity for the board to take action, which demonstrates that the managerial employees of the county are suffering the negative impact of our current financial situation. Essentially, the unrepresented employees, which I said approximate 500, represent about 14% of the workforce. But when we break down the actual impact on their group of the total savings projected if we were to achieve this same set of take backs, if you will, with the, all of the affected unions, they would represent one quarter of the actual savings to the county. And this is partly because they're higher paid and it's also partly because they have the deferred compensation benefit, which is not enjoyed by all the bargaining units, although a couple of them do have it. There is also some information regarding elected officials and they will be affected under those things which by law they can be adjusted for and that's principally the deferred compensation match. They obviously don't get sick leave buyback because they don't have sick leave, so we can't mandate that. They're not merit increases, there are no step increases for the board salaries, they don't change. So, nor for the other elected officials. So the items which are being touched for the electeds are different, but it's only because they really don't have those benefits. So that's a summary of our recommendation and I would be pleased to respond to any questions.
There were, you know, five, six, and seven on the second page were items that looks like were specific to other folks, six, the fire battalion chiefs having their holiday pay reduced from, what, 96 hours of 39? And then a language about new hirees and I think we've talked about this and had part of this in place for quite some time as well. There's nothing new news here, correct?
That's correct, actually. As we speak, I'm expecting a representative of the Fire Association to sign the MOU to bring to you. And what is proposed for the fire battalion chiefs is what was agreed to with the Fire Association bargaining unit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I should have mentioned that.
Any questions, Mr. Huntley? This is not a public hearing, any comments from the public? Thank you, Mr. Huntley, seeing none, we will bring this back to the board for action.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Ennis, seconded by Ashida. Is unanimous, thank you, Mr. Huntley. Well, we have seven minutes before our scheduled timed hearing. Madam Counsel, do we have anything that we can take care of in closed session before the 9:30 hour or close thereto?
Yes, we do. We have items A through G on your board's closed session agenda, item D is off agenda.
Okay, so we'll adjourn to closed session for five to 10 minutes, see if we can't take care of some of those items and we'll be back. Okay, we are back in open session, we'll now take our timed item, which is item number three up, Amendment to the Traver Redevelopment Project Area 2005-09 Implementation Plan. Mr. Hader.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. November 9th, William Hader, Deputy Director, Tulare County Redevelopment Agency. On November 9th, 2004, under Resolution RA 2004-22, your board, as required under California Health and Safety Code Section 33490, Part C, adopted the 2004-2009 Implementation Plan for the redevelopment project area. Prior to the adoption, several public meetings were conducted within Traver to discuss the goals and objectives for the community and for the five-year planning period. The community set forth its priorities contained in Section G, goals, objectives, and specific projects for elimination of blight. The community's intent is to achieve economic prosperity through redevelopment. However, all of the participants are very much aware that several impediments exist that preclude any substantial growth. Within the Traver RDA Plan adopted in 1989, three areas for assistance through redevelopment were identified. Increasing the capture of potential commercial trade originating through traffic on 99, Highway 99. Improvements to existing infrastructure supporting the project area, particularly streets, sewer, water, stormwater, curb gutter, sidewalk. Remove existing impediments to the economic development of the community. And elimination or mitigation of other existing blighting conditions and influences, including incompatible land uses, obsolete or substandard structures, inadequate public facilities, and/or small irregular and landlocked parcels. In the intervening period since the adoption of the 2004 Traver Implementation Plan, several issues of statewide and countywide importance regarding water quality and quantity have arisen that have long-term health and safety effects on our unincorporated communities, including state regulatory changes that impact our ability to achieve our goals and projects. These were prolonged drought that has led Tulare County to declare a drought emergency as available water supplies are diminished. Community water systems that must now address overdrafting of their water tables and pollution of our water sources in our rural communities from contaminants such as nitrates that have degraded into the quality of our drinking water, requiring implementation of treatment measures to remove, limit, or prevent intrusion of pollutants. With nitrates being one of the most common contaminants, the state is implementing new requirements for limiting nitrate intrusion that requires treatment of domestic wastewater effluent for nitrate removal. This has been experienced in some of our other communities within the county. To assist the community more effectively, staff requests that your board conduct a public hearing on the agency's request to modify the objectives and specific projects as follows. Under the goals and objectives, modify Section 2 objective. Address health and safety issues that affect the quality and quantity of the community water supply and the regulatory limitations to expansion of the sewage system, which currently impinge upon the quality of life and environment of the residents, and limit development opportunities. And under Section 3, specific projects. Implement a community-wide water conservation program to rebate, install, and/or replace toilets, showerheads with low-flow appliances and, oh, excuse me, low-flow items and to offset the cost of low-water consumption devices such as appliances. If feasible, establish a public-private partnership to upgrade the wastewater treatment facility to improve efficiencies and provide for groundwater recharge capabilities. Staff will answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of staff? Board? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Those addressing or wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. I'll count to three. Seeing none, we will bring this back to the board. Any comments, board?
Mr. Chairman, just thankful that we've got this matter to our attention and there's some proposed. there's some proposed projects in the Traver area, which I think will benefit Traver, but also have the potential to be of a benefit to all of, actually, the San Joaquin Valley if things work out and as we think they will. This could be a real sea change in terms of how we look at treating effluent. And so, I want to thank staff for bringing this to us and move approval.
Second.
Moved by Worthley, second by Innis, and the vote is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hader. Okay. We have a few items left on our closed session agenda. Madam Counsel?
I do not anticipate any announcement.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned to closed session. Thank you for attending.